How loud do we need to be? Okay, and so we will call this meeting to order. Welcome all to this special meeting of the New Haven Board of Education. This is indeed a special event, but our agenda is to take a formal vote on the recommendation of the Superintendent Search Committee, which was that Dr. Madeline Negron become the district superintendent on July 1st of this year. Getting to this moment has taken a great deal of work. I want to thank my fellow board members for their dedication and persistence, and for engaging in a rigorous process developed in consultation with our search consultants, McPherson and Jacobson. We are pleased with our decision to hire a firm specializing in superintendent searches. McPherson and Jacobson assisted in developing the criteria we sought in a superintendent. We had a large applicant pool, 31 candidates from 17 states. Each of the 31 candidates went through a deep review of their credentials as well as extensive reference checking. They were asked to submit video interviews, which were reviewed first by the consultants and later by the search committee. The candidate pool, I'm sorry, there is not, there is not... The candidate pool was narrowed to six based on their qualifications and evident ability on the work ahead for New Haven, as well as how well they aligned with the board criteria and feedback received from stakeholder groups. The search committee reviewed all the data gathered and presented by McPherson and Jacobson and narrowed the field to three finalists, including an internal candidate, Viviana Connor. Each of the three finalists were interviewed by the committee as well as panels of students, parents, teachers, administrators and staff, community and business leaders. For each candidate, the day of interviews began at 7:30 a.m. and concluded at 9:00 p.m. Because I know Viviana and her extraordinary commitment to our students, teachers and staff, I know she will work well alongside our new superintendent. I want to thank her for her professionalism and good grades. I hope all of you here today can see that the superintendent search was rigorous and intensive, and it was one we can all be proud of. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank everyone who participated in the process in one way or another. I am confident that as you have the opportunity to get to know Dr. Negron, you will come to share the confidence of the Board in her ability to lead the New Haven Public Schools in the years ahead. Thank you. With that, I will open it for public participation. Oh, I'm sorry, pleasure to lead you. We don't have a flag being that this is our first meeting, we're still having to work out some of the case, but here we are. Imagine it's behind us.
Pleasure to lead you to sit by, I'm from the United States, the two of the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the greatest thing in the world.
Dr. White, please put with participation and time to keep it off the joint. Do you have the list?
Yes. I will start the stopwatch when you start speaking. The first person is directly going to talk. When I say time, you can conclude your sentence.
Thank you, Dr. Tr. Now, the work that has gone. Education members. And other. To know them what. The board.
I am so sorry to interrupt, I cannot hear any of the public comment and I don't want to miss wonderful words from our union president.
Thank you, Dr.. Welcome, Dr. Thanks so much. And we can recap. Dr. Benitez, can you hear this microphone? Can you hear me? So maybe use this for public comment for now?
Yes, thank you.
The next person is, there's Hyclus Williams. And Williams, I'll start when you start speaking. I'll start when you start speaking, I'll say time.
Good evening. I'm happy that we're here in person. No?
I think you have to hold it near you, in front of you, so I can hear.
One, two, three, testing. Can you hear me? Okay, I start again, I think, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to be here, this wonderful auditorium today, seeing and meeting and greeting everyone. And I want to thank the Board for allowing the parent professionals to be a part of this process of interviewing the candidates for the new superintendent of schools. Dr. Tracy, I want to thank you for your service and who will continue to work together for the rest of your tenure. I'm certainly going to miss you. And Dr. Negron, welcome to New Haven Public School. New Haven is a wonderful place to work, and I know you have uprooted your life to come here and work in this beautiful space. And today I want to offer you a recipe for success. And I hope you can, you know, look into it and possibly use it someday. And we have other challenges in front of you, and we want to work collaboratively with you to support you in any way we can as the parent professionals that we're looking for to say. So, my recipe, love, empathy, inclusion, equity, collaboration. Start that gently with all our students, all our staff, all our support, all our community. Combine it with kindness. Top it off with love. And there you go. I wanted to give a little something right there. There you go. You have made the recipe for success. Just execute it with some wisdom. Thank you.
Unless there's somebody right now.
We have members. Can you hear me? Yes, hi, my name is Mita Diaz. I am a resident of Forty Beverly Lane. And I might get emotional because I have been waiting for the moment that we finally, and this is my own personal opinion, finally have a Latino superintendent work in New Haven Public Schools. And I want to thank you, but you, I just also want to say that I've worked and I watched Dr. Negron with many, many people, and she never ceases to amaze me. She never ceases to, her integrity is, is very palpable for me, and when she, and she reflects. So I, I love that, that she's able to do that, and I am so happy that my district decided in the voting. Thank you very much. I don't want to say anymore because I might cry. This is a very, this is, I, I don't know what to say, feliz, feliz, I don't even speak English right now. Because thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all.
The next speaker.
But can you hear us?
Being that this is our first meeting where we're meeting in person, hybrid, but in person, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Reverend Hernandez? Going, going forward, we're going to adopt the same rules we had before when we were meeting in person, which is that you need to, there's an hour before the board meeting where you can sign up to give public testimony in person, and at the time that the meeting starts, the forms will be taken and no one else would be allowed to sign up to speak.
Okay. Abraham Hernandez? I just want to thank the Board, which I understand is their due diligence. They did a thorough process to understand and believe which one is fair. I want to thank Dr. Tracy for her work, especially during the COVID time, that was quite challenging. Not much appreciation to him for the work that she did to make sure that our kids were back in school. I'm a resident, but also while working with Hispanic courage in the state, and one of our initiatives that we're passionate about is what we call the Faithful Education Coalition. The last 10 years, we've been working extensively on trying to see how our heinous, dangerous learners can be brought up, their standards can be raised, knowing that about 50% of them in college, only 50% of them graduate could not, could have read. Now, I'm just not speaking in the Bible, talking about Connecticut. So knowing that Dr. Negron is coming in, and knows she has that experience where we supported the previous superintendent for helping to do the same. So on behalf of this kind of career, you know, Hispanic community, your parents, we're excited to work with the administration. We're hoping to get more engaged every single year that has to show once again.
Dr. O'Carroll, last question back to me. Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Alberto Vasquez Matos. I reside in 727 Town Conley Drive, Middletown, Connecticut. I'm, I'm excited to actually join the New Haven community. Thank you, Board members, for your due diligence in, in selecting the candidate that will lead the district moving forward. Just a little bit of context, I do know two of your finalists were very well. We worked together in Hartford, Dr. Madeline Negron and Vivian, Viviana Connor. Both are exceptional individuals who have a passion for education and for putting students first. As it relates to Dr. Madeline Negron, you have selected someone who is a servant leadership, who believes in the core values of humility, vulnerability, and putting students first. She, she has, she's an individual who has no qualms of rolling up the sleeves and being part of the community and doing what's best, in the best interest of all students. So I congratulate you all for selecting an ideal candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White, and will that, will that will proceed with the agenda, which is the first being reported recommendations of the personal search committee?
Madam President, I appreciate the opportunity to do this. Glad that you approved my request to make this recommendation. The reason why I wanted to make it is because I believe in it so much that I thought it was important to me to show my support for it by making the recommendation, which I just lost. Yeah, that's your, but it died on me, so. All right, here it is. Moves that in accordance with the Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-157, the Board ordered hereby to elect Dr. Madeline Negron to serve as a superintendent of school for the New Haven Public Schools for a three-year term of commission on July 1st, 2023, and further that the Board approves the proposed contract of employment between the Board and Dr. Negron effective July 1st, 2023, and authorizes the Board, President, to execute the contract on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Yarberio, seconds.
Madam President.
Any discussion, Mr. Goldson?
Thank you, Madam President. I had some concerns at the beginning of this process, as everybody else did. But I agree of the Board to follow through with the process and as long as it was fair, and it was worthy of fear. I know there was a lot of discussion out there about a particular candidate, but I can honestly say that, that this process moved us towards that candidate. The candidate was not preconceived, it was a process that we went through, and we spent a lot of hours behind doors discussing all of the candidates and their pluses and their minuses. At the end of the day, we came to consensus, unanimous consensus on this candidate, and I am proud to be able to both burn on top of the ground and to see this remain here today, and it'll be part of that history. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Goldson. Any further discussion, Dr. Joyner and then Mayor Eller?
Microphone's coming down.
I've worked with a lot of big city superintendents, and the ones that I found to be the best are those who have had, have had a lived experience where they were born in difficult circumstances, and they were able to, through the force of their own will, their intellect, their humility and the support of other people, rise up from their own disadvantage, become entry-level educator. And in the case of Dr. Negron, do every single job in the field of education, from teacher to assistant principal, the principal of a little school where she stayed for a long period of time. She was not a skipper. To come into New Haven and run in one of the best high schools in the country, they won national awards. I was there a lot, my nephews and nieces attended the career, and I know what kind of leader she is. To become a district office personnel, to become second-in-command in Hartford and become a college professor, and to start out not speaking English from a poor agricultural back and rise up to this level. I won't say it's a miracle, but it's close. But she will not be able to do this job well without the support of the children, the families, the politicians, the clergy in this community. And we have to, you have to, where, as, as Jesse Jackson said when he ran for president, we might have come over in different ships, but we're in the same boat now. And we're going to have to come together as a city, we're going to have to look past a lot of perceived differences, recognize that we all came from the same source, we all going to end up in the same place, and she has what it takes. And I pledge my undying support to her because I have seen what she can do. Had impact on my family as well, in terms of my nephews at least, so I'm glad you're here. And as I said to Dr. Tracy when she was appointed, this is mine right out of the book of Pesta, Reverend Hernandez, you were chosen for such a time in this. So pepper out everybody.
Thank you. It, it was good to see everybody. And I think that some of the comments that were made, I'm feeling the same thing, just the opportunity to chat with each other, joke around with each other. Being started allows us more of an opportunity to kind of reconnect to human beings, and that feels really good. And Dr. Tracy, and I have gotten to originally quite well over these past three years. Your job is not over yet, as you know. There's a lot of people that are saying goodbye, you know, it feels like right now, but there's still more work ahead, right? But Dr. Tracy has gone, has guided us through incredibly challenging times with a steady hand, with perseverance, with partnership, and, and I know that we are all very, very grateful for everything that you have done, not just as superintendent, Dr. Tracy, but with anybody in your, your career for New Haven Public School students. So thank you, Dr. Tracy. And, and I also wanted to take a moment to thank Doctors Blair Stein and McPherson and Jacobson, who guided us through a process that, you know, is, is challenging. We had incredibly good candidates, incredibly good candidates, and this decision was very, very difficult. But as you heard from Mr. Goldson, the collaboration with the Board, the amount of effort and thought and integrity that went into this process is something that I think we all should be proud of. And you helped guide us through that process, Dr. Blair Stein. I, I wanted to thank all the people that participated, there were students, there were parents, there were teachers, there were support staff, there were administrators. So many people that interviewed the candidates, participated in the surveys. I'm very grateful for your support to this process. And this is a really big day in New Haven, right? This is a really, really big day. And undoubtedly, we face a lot of challenges, and nobody needs to be reminded of the challenges that we face around literacy, the challenges that we face around absenteeism, misbehavior in our school, so many families struggling in the midst of poverty, and just incredible hurdles just to live a normal, solid, standard, calm life. There's a lot of challenges. But if you walk into school any day, and I say that as mayor, I say this as parent, you see just example after example after example of good people, teachers, parents, principals, that are doing such good work, informing themselves into this job under incredible circumstances that, that suburban townspeople don't experience. And that is what's beautiful about, I think, your interest, Dr. Negron, in throwing yourself into this very, very challenging but incredibly rewarding job. You have 25 years of public education experience, you bring to the table experience as a teacher, as a parent, as an assistant principal, as an administrator. You bring so much to the table, your experience in Hartford Public Schools and obviously New Haven Public Schools. But I, what most inspires me, other than that you knocked it out of the park in your interview and, and everything that I think we got as far as feedback from the other stakeholder groups, is your, your story. If a child can see it, they can be it. And a lot of people have already made comments about you being the first Latina superintendent. But your lived experience is in so many ways representing everyone in our community, in particular, the most challenged, those that are struggling to persevere. Everyone in our community that has not the opportunities ever, so maybe even may have. The fact that you were able to come into our public school district and persevere through all of that and attain such an incredible leadership position is something that will inspire all children in our community to strive to do more, to envision who they can be in the future. This is a tough job, as you know, but there are enough, over 19,000 families, thousands of teachers and parent professionals, other members of our community that are all betting on your success and all ready to support you, you stand ready, and you will see this, I suspect, in the unanimous vote by this Board to support you in this endeavor ahead. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody who's been involved in the process, all the different stakeholder groups, people that take the time. Reach out to members of the Board individually and also the people that took the time through comments in newspapers coming to, and the online survey that was done as well. We had excellent, excellent candidates that we, that we looked at, we talked to some excellent candidates, and we're going to hire an excellent person for the position, and that's something I'm confident in, and just want to appreciate, say I appreciate everybody that's, that's taking the time and look forward to continue to work with people as we move forward because this is just one, you know, the next step in the long, the, the long amount, the large amount of work. Just also want to say finally, two, thanks to all my fellow Board members. We, we don't always work well together, we work wonderfully together, it's been refreshing, and I think that's a testament to the importance of this decision and how much we really realize that. And the second thing is, finally, just want to also thank our current superintendent, Dr. Tracy, as other people have. She's got us to this point, she's really trying, trying these things and is setting things up for the success of Dr. Negron. So thanks, everyone. is uh, setting things up for the success of Dr. Negron. So, thanks, everyone.
Doctor Benitez?
Yes, uh, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Tracy for her work and her grace with all of us. When we push, she's always been willing to listen. And um, and I know it's been a great career for her, so I hope that she um, she can look back at her tenure in New Haven as a wonderful thing, which I know she will. Uh, I also want to thank uh, Ms. Connor for um, her great participation in in the interviews. She was a very good candidate. I really believe that New Haven has provided opportunities for um, our leadership to grow and to learn and to be able to enter a superintendent's um process and be able to um, get interviews and even become finalists. I think all of our internal candidates should feel proud that they were able to do this, at least to the point of an interview. And of course, Ms. Connor, I congratulate her on the finalists. Finally, I want to congratulate uh, Dr. Negron for becoming that, for her um, getting to be chosen to be the next superintendent in New Haven Public Schools. Another way of of looking at this person is also how New Haven has given opportunities to people. Dr. Negron was a principal in New Haven and everybody knows that, but she also was a teacher in New Haven. And I think what we all need to remember is that our teachers are so important to us that we groom them, we help them, and we let them grow. And we have one of them now become our superintendent. So, thank you very much and um, looking forward to working with the team of eight.
Very good. Uh, for my part, I just, I want to thank Dr. Sprecher Stein for all of her work um, on this search. We emailed a lot, we spoke a lot on the phone, there were texts on Saturday evening, Sunday morning. And so, I I really appreciate all the work that you did uh, to get us this far. Thank you. To to um, our communications director, Justin Harman. I want to thank you for all the hard work that you put behind the scenes to get us all here and um, yeah, and the public, making sure that the stakeholder meetings went off without a hitch, um, and the invitations went out. And so, I thank you for that as well. Um, to Dr. Tracy, what can I say? Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
She's not finished.
You have no idea, or maybe you do, all of the work behind the things that happened, especially throughout the initial part of the pandemic. Um, she and I worked very closely together. Thank God with her. We were speaking on Sunday evenings, um, Saturday evenings after she finished with all of her uh, religious requirements. Um, at at all hours, we were on the phone or texting or emailing, trying to figure out what was going to be the next step um, in getting our kids back to school and getting our teachers hired. Um, it's been and it's been an arduous process, a long one, but I am very grateful to have had you at the helm while I was board president as well. So, thank you for all of the hard work. And hopefully, once you're off, I mean, it's gonna be a while, we still have a few months. I'll still get the random phone call to let me know how you're doing in your next chapter.
Thank you. Uh, quickly, just two things. Uh, Dr. Negron, I am very excited to have you, very hopeful, very grateful uh, the movement I saw in this team of eight and I'm ready to go. Second thing, President Rivera, uh, just want to thank you. For for all, I thank you for the things that I myself have seen, but there are countless things that we have not seen. And to lead this board uh, and to rankle us um, and to lead with such grace and with such a um, steady intent. And to do so with conviction and passion and clarity and humility. Um, but with the determination that not only are you going to get through this, but we're going to get through this. So, thank you for being our point person on a number of occasions where we filter our thoughts and ideas and communicate them through you and you having to collect them and sort them and pass them along and probably sometimes redirect them. Uh, ju- just thank you for the the expense that you paid and we won't be able to pay back. Uh, so just thank you very much for leading us through this process, for working with our consultants, uh, for working with all of us in the, so we appreciate you. I appreciate you.
Don't so well? Doctor Tracy?
Thank you, President Rivera and Board of Education folks. I must say that I've known Dr. Negron for quite a few years now. Many people do not know that I interviewed her and Dr. Benitez and I was at Central Office to become Directors of Instruction. And we worked together with me leading the team, so we've had a good run in Central Office together, working for New Haven Public School students and teachers. So, you have been around for a while. You love New Haven. I welcome you to back to New Haven. I only hope that everyone will treat you well and will respect the work that you do. The work of superintendent is a difficult one. Sometimes it's a long road. But you have to lead with integrity, be ethical, don't be anyone's, um, what should I say? What I'm looking for. You don't owe anyone to anything to anyone but the students of New Haven. I want to say, no, we don't give any ethical, not being led by anyone, but by the firm belief that our mission is with students and our mission is to work with teachers to help them to help students. You will make it. Don't ever compromise what you believe in. Stand strong. Believe in your values that you have brought with you and live by those things. Yes, you're gonna require collaboration, but collaboration does not mean compromise. Some people believe I compromise and I say yes, and that's collaboration. That's not collaboration. Collaboration means I listen, I weigh the opinions, and if what you say makes sense, I'll go with that mixed with what I believe in at the same time in the major work. I will be around to support you one hundred percent. So, thank you again for coming to New Haven.
Thank you all. I'm seeing no further discussion. Uh, we will vote on the appointment of Dr. Negron as New Haven Public School Superintendent. Doctor Benitez?
Yes.
Doctor Joyner?
Yes.
Doctor Yarborough?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Mayor Helleker?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and so that motion carries. It gives me great pleasure to welcome Dr. Nadine Negron back to New Haven. Dr. Negron knows New Haven and its schools very well. Not only did she teach here, but she served as principal of Hill Region and Career High School. She later became a Director of Early Childhood and then Director of Instruction. At the same time, her experience in Hartford as Chief of Academics and now as Acting Deputy Superintendent of Academics and School Leadership has encompassed many of the same issues we face here in New Haven. First, how to provide the strongest possible academic program and to facilitate student engagement and achievement. How to build extended learning opportunities as well as partnerships with industry and colleges that expand opportunities for students and increase the graduation rate. How to truly celebrate the rich diversity of the community and equity in programming. How to recruit and retain teachers and staff. And lastly, how to advance a culture of fiscal responsibility and to address chronically insufficient budgets. While Dr. Negron is not going to have all the answers, she can bring a fresh perspective and strong voice to our ongoing conversations about strategy in all aspects of our mission. But it's a historic moment for New Haven. Dr. Negron will be our first Hispanic school superintendent. The majority of students are now at thirty percent. I wholeheartedly celebrate Dr. Negron's experience and her potential. I am eager to work alongside her in her role as the next leader for the New Haven Public Schools.
Well, thank you so much. I am so excited um, for some remarks that I want to share with you. And uh, and trust in New Haven Public Schools. New Haven has always felt like a home. Being welcomed during my days as a classroom teacher, as a central office administrator. I am excited from now being my durceau. Fully integrating myself into the amazing, rich, linguist forward to working dedicated administrator for students and over eating, listening, learning community. No time for students, all of them. A total of opportunities to realize hopes and dreams. I am to do in this foundation that has been established by Dr. Tracy and by the entire because I know that it's going to start as this tiny in New Haven Public Schools to its So, thank you, Dr. Tracy, and thank you, Dr. Harman. Thank you so much. Uh, take this up and my network. And so to my husband. We can start east. I want to thank Pepper. There are enough physically here to know they are rejoined. Company in our little home in El Campo is I go I think because I'm setting more values and expect ourselves to my parents. Thank you for always reiterating that our corporation opens a world of opportunities. Pente si te puede, te puede. I look forward to working with you, the entire board, I think we need T-shirts that say uh, entire energy store that is drive. You can be there, you don't want I am not work and bring I know like you said, this is not about me. This is about of the truth. Make sure that we are creating that access that they need to be able to have opportunities so that they can their destinies flourish, right? And that's what we have to do. And it's making me flourish. We're going together, we glasses.
One with that, I would be taking the motion to adjourn.
So, move, Madam President.
Doctor Joyner?
Yes.
Doctor Yarborough?
Yes.
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 Mayor Helleker?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.